Brian, are you ready?
Good, how about you?
Doc, are you ready?
Good.
Good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2024 meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice to meetings provided for the Public Meeting Act, the date, time, and location of the meeting, or including the annual meeting schedule posted on the public bulletin board in municipal building filed by the borough clerks. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any of the relevant documents can be found on the borough's website, attached to the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, an announcement is made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon, and anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniel's Law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please follow me.
Mr. Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Here.
Please rise to the platform.
With the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like...
Thank you. First on the agenda is our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address on the record. If you're with us by telephone, press star nine, and if you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand. Hearing seen none. We have no presentations. First on the agenda is ordinance 19-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance appropriating $361,000 for improvements to Chalk Way and ADP Boulevard in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 19-2024?
So moved.
Second. Fishman Goldstein, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none.
Number 19-2024 will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 16, 2024.
Thank you. Next is the introduction of ordinance 20-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance amending the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 15 entitled solid waste management, Section 15-3 entitled dumpsters, amending Chapter 11 entitled property maintenance by creating Section 11-4 entitled temporary structures, and amending Chapter 30 entitled land development by repealing Section 30-403.22 entitled portable on-demand storage structures. Dumped, you can use it in reserve.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 20-24?
So moved.
Second.
Barney Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none.
Ordinance number 20-2024 will be reversed to the planning boards or ensure the amendments proposed here are inconsistent with master plan. Ordinance will be posted on the borough's website. Those who will oppose, the public hearing will be postponed until Tuesday, July 16, 2024.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the introduction of ordinance 21-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled fire prevention and protection, Section 13-1.7 entitled permit for use.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 21-2020?
Motion.
Second.
Barati Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none.
Order 21-2024 will be posted on the borough's website. This public hearing will be published in progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 16, 2024.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is... 2022 was impacted by storm, correct, Doc?
Yes, thank you.
Next is a public hearing on ordinance 15-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled parks recreation, Section 14-2 entitled conduct and support recreation areas.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 15-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 15-2020? Hearing seen none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Trillo, Marty, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled conduct and use of parks and recreation areas.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 15-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barati, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Barty.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman.
Yes.
Goldstein.
Yes.
Barati.
Yes.
Trillo.
Yes.
Ordinance number 15-2023. 2024 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is a public hearing on ordinance 17-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 11 entitled property maintenance to amend various fees.
Excuse me, ordinance 16, misspoke. Uh, so we have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 16-2020.
So moved.
Second.
Barati, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 16-2024? Hearing seen none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 16-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 11 entitled property maintenance to amend various fees.
So a motion, excuse me, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 16-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Marty, Barati, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Barty.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman.
Yes.
Goldstein.
Yes.
Barati.
Yes.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes.
Ordinance 16-2024 will be advertised in progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing on ordinance 17-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various equipment for the administration department in and by the Borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $55,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $42,750 bonds or notes of the Borough of finance partners across their own.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 17-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Barati, Barati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none, Mr. Watkins, please read, uh, sorry. Please, ordinance by title only. Well?
We open the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 17-2024? Hearing seen none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Marty, Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none. Now, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various equipment for the administration department in and by the Borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $55,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $42,750 bonds or notes of the Borough of finance partners across their own.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 17-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Goldstein, Barti, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mrs. Fishman.
Yes.
Goldstein.
Yes.
Barati.
Yes.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes.
Ordinance 17-2024 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect 20 days after the first publication and after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next, we have a public hearing, ordinance 18-2024. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance amending Section 3C of Bond Ordinance Number 6-2023 of the Borough of Roseland, County of Essex, New Jersey, finally adopted February 21st, 2023, in order to amend the description of the project to include additional roads.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 18-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Barati, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none, does anyone wish to be heard on 18-2020? Hearing seen none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 18-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Fishman, Barati, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing seen none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance amending Section 3C of Bond Ordinance Number 6-2023 of the Borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, finally adopted February 21st, 2024, excuse me, 2023, in order to amend the description of the project to include additional roads.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 18-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Barney and Goldstein, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Who would, Barney, Goldstein? Mr. Barty.
Yes.
Yes.
Fishman.
Yes.
Goldstein.
Yes.
Barati.
Yeah.
Trillo.
Yes.
Number 18-2024 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is Resolution 208-2024. Motion to approve the June 14th, 2024 bill list. Everyone received the bill list? Any questions, concerns, and/or requests? If there are none, we have a motion, move the bill list.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? I think we have Resolutions 1 through 15 on the agenda by Resolution Number 209-2024 through 223-2024. I'd like to move them in their entirety. Everyone can review them for questions, concerns, and/or requests. If we don't have any recusals, questions, or concerns, take a motion to adopt the resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Barti, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against or none? Next, we have consent agenda. There's one add-on to waive the fee for an upcoming tournament on Saturday, USABL, correct?
Yes.
USABL, what they do is they pay per game, which actually gives them higher, higher revenue.
I believe.
So we're looking to waive the permit fee and then they'll pay us by game payments we may payable to the, to the borough and handle through REC. USABL, it's an extension of REC. Normally, we go to other towns, we normally go to other towns to have this tournament. We're just having that, this year, we're hosting it.
Right, so North Caldo's hosting.
It's kids baseball.
North Caldo's hosting and Roseland's hosting. We're trying to get all six teams here. One of the teams that we've never been for, so the seven, the little guys are going like an hour and a half away to play. Eight, we have the eight U and the nine U team here. Saturday, all day Saturday.
So do we have a motion to waive that fee?
Make a motion to waive the fee for the baseball.
I will second the motion. Barati, Barti, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none. Uh, next, for my report, I'll just, before I get into what I want to discuss, um, thank everyone for a few weeks ago, the opening of the complex is amazing. It's amazing all the people that were there, even when there's no events. Thank the members of the snack shack. They're probably doing better business than I think Jersey might have in town. They are really busy, but there's a lot of kids and people enjoying the field during the day and at night, and everyone's been really respectful of the complex, and so it's working out really well. That's good news. The bad news, we have to discuss, uh, not bad news, but we have to have a discussion about noise ordinance and fines when it comes to developers. When I say developers, I talk about our core obligations and all developments going on. We've had a number of issues with the first development that they started to, to work near, uh, which is Roseland. And our concern, my concern, is that if we don't have any teeth to these ordinances where they escalate fines, it's supposed to be a business. So, um... What is the complaint, Ben? Are they starting early or is it... They're starting early, working late. There's, there's a whole host of complaints. But the point is that we need to discuss how we're gonna make it so these fines actually have the best way we can.
Do we need to adjust the times in the ordinance?
No, no, I just think the enforcement of the times is the key.
Okay.
Times need to be adjusted. I think they're reasonable, as long as they apply by then. Maybe have the meeting on Wednesday, Thursday, and the next day of the day after, they were starting, set.
Let me ask you, somebody asked me this. Can they work on Juneteenth because it's federal, because it's a federal holiday? Can their developers work? Yeah, I didn't either. It doesn't just...
So what are the times again? No.
Oh, I don't remember.
During the weekend, on the weekend or... We don't allow work on the weekend. Oh, so it's just during the weekend. But there was an incident where after this, we had a meeting, and there was a number of representatives, two representatives. And the next day, they were... We're all documented, but the point is, if, if they can get work done beforehand, and they're saving money, it's $200 to cost them to do a business.
Yeah.
So I, I really think we need to escalate the fines that we're dealing with. You know, it's not already...
So probably, if you still go this way, because some of the judges issue fines, I think you can start at 500 up to 10,000, but I think you don't even care, you know, to try to make it stiff, but the beginning fine would be a higher number, like a thousand dollars.
But, so in other words, we can't, we, we're not, we're not able to legislate that. We can legislate the beginning fine to be stiff.
Yes. Yeah, and then they can just pay that, that one.
Is there anything we can do within this ordinance that would hold a developer to a higher standard than me? Yeah, because it's the same. If I have a noise ordinance, you know, is, is there, is there... You want to find a homeowner a thousand dollars? I don't think so. Well, I'm sorry, I just, I think they're not, they're not one of the same, so can we treat them different?
But the homeowners could work on weekends.
So, the touchstone inquiry for all these noise ordinances has to be reasonableness. So, I think you could tailor an ordinance, if that's what you guys want to do, to saying for large construction projects, we could say maybe over a certain amount of units, like we're not talking about single-family homes, right? It's applicable to single-family homes, people that are mowing their lawn or building their kids a little plague house in their backyard, but, um, possibly developments over a certain amount of units, um, regulating, like we said, like the weeks, the times, but it has to be reasonable, right? You can't, um, squeeze them for a two-hour period on Monday. That's the only day in time you could work, because then these projects are just never gonna get done.
Could, could we say anything outside the hours of the ordinance?
Um, what do you mean, anything outside?
You said one day for two hours, so if, if you decide on a thousand-dollar, not. Anytime outside the ordinance, two units are high, yeah, for two units are high.
Right.
Meaning trying to protect single-family homeowner opposed to a developer.
Right. So if you're saying, like, at, let's say it's at 6 o'clock, you can't work on these 20-unit buildings after 6 o'clock, then you, then yeah, if, but you know, there has to be an enforcer out there to be able to issue that ticket, be there on the spot, issuing that ticket after 6:00, that they see there's pictures, what, what have you, um, for them to go to the judge, give them their ticket, because then that person has to appear in court and prosecute that ticket on behalf of...
That, that was my next question. Mandatory court appearance would be even better.
Well, right now, it is, but, but if you wanted a set fine, if you're trying to draft it, they would just, they could just pay the ticket without them. Currently, if they get a summons, they have to go to court. Well, going to court would be more...
Even the current, the current fine is what?
So I think it's a range, so the judge has discretion.
What to start with?
500, I think our ordinance is 500.
Yes, Doc.
I'm just gonna say, you have problems with repeat offenders. If you can work where the ordinance, so that every day the violation exists, occurs, it's another separate violation.
Correct.
Right.
Then he can, every day.
Well, each, each occurrence would be independent. A noise ordinance on a Monday, a noise violation on a Monday is a, is a different noise violation on Tuesday, unless they kept going through the night, in my opinion.
You've already structured a new, an example, a new one would be, the second time would be, minimum would be a higher. But, but I don't think that's... So with each occurrence, if required, or court appearance, then it's a big line to pay.
What I would, alright, so what I would like to do is, I would like to have... What I would like to do is, I would like to... Yes.
The second, the second time, if it's 500 the first time, the second time should be 750, the third time should be 100.
Drive, each time you get one, they escalate greatly.
Right.
The whole point is to be a deterrent from continuing to do that. Your third offense, you're calling the...
Since the current ordinance, the need between size of that activity, so for the general, we might as well try to catch whatever best practice is, whether it's by unit size or whatever, and we're gonna tap into the wording of the...
Great, he's got, maybe some kind of... Like someone said, someone mowing their lawn.
Or someone building a deck in their backyard might be different than big, giant trucks.
Yeah, but send that to committee and then on for next meeting.
There, there wasn't a complaint about, was the complaint solely on the timing, not the, the noise itself? Like, if not, it's too loud during the hours where it's acceptable, whereas they started outside, because that's a, that's a different issue. If they're working within the hours, but the volume exceeds that, that's different.
What they, what they were doing is, when, when the developer put a fence up,
Yeah.
they would get there early and start mustering for lack of...
For sure.
And that would be very loud.
And I'm just saying, that's a different issue altogether. That's a third issue that if we need to tackle, it's much more complicated, I would assume.
Yeah, our noise ordinances have several different violations. It's not just construction.
Right.
They are all addressed.
Okay.
So just send that to committee for back. But we'd like, I think we'd all like escalating and mandatory court appearances. It's the same thing we do with the trucks on Lincoln. They don't care about the money, but they have to go court. It's a whole nother issue, we can talk.
I like the second vendor rate and higher, all that's good, that's very good.
But honestly, I would like to see more than three steps to this, because, you know, it's very difficult to violate a noise ordinance for a second. They're gonna be doing construction for two years, five times out of, you know, 560 working days. And they, so it could exceed, but scale that goes way past just three, you know? Something that has multiple layers.
In fact, I just make one note, too, um, a lot of time, like when people, developers get their approvals, right? They go before the planning board and zoning board. They only have a certain amount of time to construct their, um, projects. So, um, and also at that time, people that live in the neighborhood, they have an opportunity to go before the board, and a lot of the times, the planning board or zoning board might make conditions of approval in their resolution saying you cannot work during these days and that day. So, um, it can also be like a compliance issue for the boards, too, based on how they got their approval. So it's just something else to think about.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the noise ordinance slash escalated plan? We look forward to the results from committee. Anyone, committee reports? Anyone have anything to add?
One quick thing, um, Maureen and I were talking earlier today about the, uh, tax bills. Um, we're waiting for the state to certify their budget, and then the county will certify our tax rate. Looking like the state will do that around 30th of the month, and then the county normally does that two weeks after, within the two weeks, so if we're, if we can, if they do it along, you know, along that schedule prior to July 19th, then we could send the tax bills out July 19th, not have to send estimated tax bills out.
I, I, I would like, I agree with you, because two tax bills is confusing.
Yep, exactly.
And townwide managed twice within two weeks is a waste.
Costs money, exactly. That was our thought. I mean, we said, I mean, every year, we have this discussion.
Right.
And we send the estimated bills, and then one week later, the county certified, you know, it's, so it's, it's a waste. So we're, um, Maureen talked to Kevin today, and that's, that's where we're at. We feel comfortable about it. Wanted to bring that to the council.
Anyone has any, yeah.
And that's what we're gonna do.
And let me ask you a question. If any, if they, if they, if the state certified later, and we happen to send them out later, don't we give them extra time to pay that order?
We do, but we still have our obligations to, to pay, so Maureen gives the cash to pay the obligation. But there's options there regarding to that problem. Likely won't happen. Anyone else adding to the committee reports?
I have just a couple things. Um, the Rose, I just want to remind everybody that the Roseland Police Department is having ice cream with a cup on Sunday at 11:00 AM at Tom Auburn Field, so I just want to remind everybody. Oh, I mean, in the parking lot, sorry. I just, it's here in the parking lot, so I just wanted to remind everybody. Um, I also wanted to give you an update on the first aid squad. The paid service has, is now fully staffed. They run Sunday 6:00 AM to Sunday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, from May 19th to June 13th, our volunteers responded to 25 calls and the paid service to 32.
Wow.
So those are 32 calls that would have potentially been missed, not having these guys at the squad. So, um, they're, they're averaging like a seven-minute response time now. So I really think this was the way to go. It's, it's really turning out to be a good, a good move.
And this is, this has augmented the first aid squad, and the first aid squad was not all supportive of it, it was kind of their push.
Yes.
So it's not, they're, they're not taking anything away from volunteers, they're just there to assist, to make sure our residents have that service offered.
For during the day, and the volunteers are making, and it's allowing them to make up their coverages at night. So they're, they're, they're getting to their fault at night, so I think it's turned out to be...
This, this is great. I, I spoke to a resident today that before this was put in place, um, had, uh, Barnabas dispatch to their house, and they had to pay, um, they had a bill for $2,000. So, you know, this is a step in the right direction.
But I think most towns are forced to do this now because they don't get voluntary, uh, help anymore, so, yeah, yeah.
And that's all I have.
Anyone else for committee?
I just have, uh, two announcements for the senior group, and that's on June 28th at noon, we'll have the senior picnic here. Um, and, uh, at, um, I think it's 12 to 3, and on July 12th, uh, the next trip will be to Monmouth Raceway. So please let, uh, the recreation office know if you'd like to come.
Anyone else? Hearing seen none. Next on the agenda, we have our second round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via home, press star nine. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand.
Janet Trin, 138, Mary Kelly, Roseland Glen, HOA president. I just wanted to go back to your comments and to the attorney's remarks regarding the penalties for construction. I was actually at the FIM meeting last time Avalon Bay appeared, and, um, I spoke at that meeting, and I specifically asked the planning board to remind the developer of the hours of operation, and he agreed that they would abide by anything that the, the town established. We have had three incidents in the last couple of weeks with, um, issues related to starting before 8:00 in the morning, working beyond, uh, 6:00 at night. I was wondering if you would take the, um, penalties or whatever you're developing in terms of penalty, take it one step further, and perhaps maybe consider after three incidents, shutting them down for a day, $500, $1,000, $2,000 to a company like Avalon Bay is pocket change. It's not gonna have any impact. But if you threaten to shut them down for a day, that'll, that'll resonate, so I hope you consider that. I was wondering if you would take the penalties or whatever you're developing in terms of penalty, take it one step further, and perhaps maybe consider it after three incidents, shutting them down for a day. Five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars to a company like Avalon Bay is pocket change. It's not going to have any impact. But if you threaten to shut them down for a day, that'll... That'll resonate. So I hope you consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering if there was any follow-up with the Jersey DOT, about the two eighty, the barrier or fence or something?
The fence, the fence on two eighty for your complex?
Well, for the whole, you know, for everybody, you know, basically.
They've, I believe, according to Sidney Weiner, who's your HOA president, they started construction on that fence a week or two ago, not a barrier, but a higher fence, and I don't remember, did she say metal or did she say wood? Metal fence along where her property is. So they did construct that. They are constructing that portion of it, taking that old, whatever was down chain link and replacing it with metal fence, is what she told me. As for the barrier, we have not heard back yet, but that goes a whole...
I was just wondering if they're doing any...
Oh, they're there. They're there, and they actually cleaned up the garbage that's in that back area also, so they are...
They're going to do the whole thing.
Yeah, they're there.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for public comment? Yeah, behind the curtain says no. All right. We'll take a motion for a German, please.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, I think. Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. Stay cool.